Call the meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Barr?
Here.
Jovanini?
Here.
Echov?
Here.
Callis?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Hicks?
Here.
Bradshaw?
Here.
Clark?
Here.
Gaber?
Here.
Willie?
Here.
Thank you. Up first, we have the consent agenda with four items. We've had a chance to peruse that. Any questions on that? If not... Okay, motion by John Willie, seconded by Don Hicks to approve the consent agenda. Roll call, please.
Barr?
Yes.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Echov?
Yes.
Callis?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Gaber?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to the regular agenda, we have a presentation from Adam Donz on the Greater Livingston County Economic Development Council. Adam, step up.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you and provide an update and an overview of some of the things that the city administrator, Wilford, and I have discussed about our plans for 2023, where we're going, and an overview of our Economic Development Council organization in more general terms. The mayor has asked me to keep my presentation brief tonight in honor or recognition, in honor of the council members that you'll be recognizing who are departing from the board, so I'll be brief in my remarks, but allow time for any follow-up questions anyone may have. Hannah, if you can start the PDF slide presentation there and go to the next slide, please. Thank you. Okay, so in overview on the, and this is slide two in your packets, for those of you that can't see the screen, in overview of our organization, we have 73 members with 61 in the private sector and a dozen in the public sector, including our local schools, municipalities throughout the county, and Livingston County itself. There, you can see that we have appropriated from the Livingston County Board, this is on a carryover basis, $776,000. That goes toward our mission of increasing commerce and economic opportunity specifically and chiefly through our employment incentive grants, which is $5,000 a job for companies that create 10 jobs or more over the course of a year, and we'll get into detail later in the presentation on those. Of the top 20 private sector employers in Livingston County, they're collectively responsible for over 4,100 positions, and nearly two-thirds of those employers are members of the GLC, EDC, and half of those are on our Board of Directors. So it's nice that we have buy-in from, it's nice that we have buy-in from, in support from both the public sector and private sector. And as you can see, one of the mandates over a decade ago was that more of our funding come from the private sector than the public sector. That is now the case. We've achieved that mandate, and I'm also pleased to report that we've held our membership due structure steady. We've never raised our dues for any individual member over the last 12 years. The next slide, please, Hannah. With respect to just some unemployment data, this is an annual unemployment rate taken at December of every year, and you can see, last December, we were at 4.2% is a state and 3.6% is a county here in Livingston County. So we're beating the state average, and that's why employers often comment that one of their greatest challenges is finding people, people to hire. So our programs for employment creation and those incentives that we offer help to make... Oh, I think Hannah advanced the slide one too far, but Hannah, can you go back a slide? Other way. One more deeper in the presentation, please. Can you go to the next slide, please? Yeah, thank you. That's the slide that I was speaking of on my remarks there, and so I was noting that one of the, with 3.6 unemployment as of the turn of the year, that's one of the reasons why it's difficult to find help, and as those wages go up, our hiring incentive of $5,000 a job is very meaningful to a number of employers. Next slide, Hannah. This shows how, this slide, in contrast to the last, was the state of Illinois average. This shows how Livingston County stacks up, is a February 2023, the most recent unemployment data in relation to its peer group. And so you can see unemployment rates of 6.6 and 6.5% respectively in LaSalle and Kanka Key County. We are outside of McLean and Woodford, the lowest unemployment there, and again, some of those challenges of hiring are evidenced by these slides. That number is going up as inflation persists. Of course, it's the Federal Reserve's mandate to cool the economy, and so that's why you're seeing the increasing trend in unemployment numbers there. The next slide, please. So these are a summary of incentives that the GLC, EDC, has provided. I focus this specifically on businesses in Pontiac. We have worked, of course, with businesses throughout Livingston County, Dwight, Fairberry, Forest, and the like, but with respect to your council and our constituents here in Pontiac, this slide focuses on money just put out the door here in the city of Pontiac. And so this is a collection of our building improvement grants when people are enhancing their buildings, such as Family Eye Care, Cup and Scone. Those are some buildings. Bob and Ringo's here, they're going to be doing additional improvements this spring, and we approved that last fall. The hiring incentive I mentioned was $10,000 or $5,000 per job for companies that create 10 jobs or more. That's noted under a economic incentive to ATR, Anthony Lift Gates, and Wally's, our property tax abatement, and then educational stimulus, which is STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math, as we've granted that out to District 429 in the LACC. Cumulatively, as you drop down to the bottom line there, the GLC, EDC has awarded $490,000 to businesses, just businesses and schools, just in the city of Pontiac over the last six years. So if you take a look at $490,000 divided by six years, as on average, we're putting back $81,000 into, per year, into just the city of Pontiac. If you divide that 81,676 by what the city pays in its membership investment to the EDC, which is $23,862, for every $1 you're sending into the EDC, about $3.42 are coming back to the community, is evidenced by this chart with $490,000 back in the last six years. So I think that is meaningful in terms of what we're doing just here in Pontiac alone, excluding the other dollars that have been put forth to the other municipalities through the Livingston County funds. As you'll recall, our funding largely from Livingston County does not come from property tax or sales tax. It comes from the building permit fees that were charged over a decade ago to the wind turbines. So if you're asked where our funding comes from, it's from the building permit fees of the wind turbines well over a decade ago, and that number of $760,000 is a carryover number. We use it on a draw basis, and whatever we don't spend in a given year gets carried forward to the next year. Next slide, please, Hannah. So in 2023 and beyond, we'll continue with our building improvement grants, our economic incentives, our property tax abatements, and the like, but there are some new opportunities that Mr. Wilford and I have discussed, and with respect to advancing our position for development throughout the community. And one of the things that our Economic Development Council has worked on up in Dwight is putting property under option, much like the city did a number of years ago, out on the ground for precision planting. And so the GLC, EDC did that up in Dwight. We have a website that is specifically focused on the property that's under option up there. We've defined a purchase price. We've hired a real estate broker to market the property. We are, we don't have a deal signed, but there's a developer out of Chicago, and I think a deal is imminent within the next, within the next few weeks. And so we're really, we're really pleased that we've been able to work closely with the city on a land development initiative and attract a large developer. Their company is about $93 billion in scale of various asset classes of real estate, and they're interested in Livingston County, and so we want to follow that, that model of identifying land, negotiating options, doing due diligence on the site, mapping it, and eventually hiring a broker to get more broad exposure. Hannah, if you can play the video, it's about two and a half minutes long, and I thought it would be nice for the council to see this video that we did for Dwight, and we would look to do for some properties down here in Pontiac as well. Yep, you can play. Thank you, Hannah. And now I'll just call your attention very briefly to this map, as we look at sites around the community, south and to the east of Exact Packaging, and at the 23 and I-55 corridor and Grand Prix Drive. We propose to identify some parcels that are primed for development on Grand Prix Drive and otherwise, and put some of that marketing collateral together, so that information is immediately available when a developer calls. You know, in five minutes, you can tell them, hey, here's the power that's available at these sites, the water, the wastewater, all teed up, the pricing on the properties. You don't have to haggle with landowners. Respond and react with, with a high degree of knowledge. So we look forward to working at the direction of the city council and with the city staff on that. We've already started to work with Liz and Hannah and Mary on the city's website and enhancing what was a real strong start, but, but putting some more information about the programs that the city of Pontiac is offering and the EDC on the city of Pontiac's website. And so we think there'll be some meaningful steps taken that are new steps with the city of Pontiac beyond what we've customarily been doing over the last few years, any, any other directives that would be given to us by the council or city staff. So with that, I appreciate the city's generous and sustained support of the Economic Development Council, and I'd take any questions that anyone has, or myself.
So Adam, what you're saying is you're going to create some options along that corridor and then leverage that with the city? Is that what you're, am I understanding that properly?
Well, this is a, this is a picture of Dwight, their land, but we would look to replicate all these same steps, a marketing video, working with a national real estate brokerage, outlining where the utilities are and what their capacity is, and in doing that with some specific properties that we would identify, some of which are already city-owned on Grand Prix Drive, and others that would be geared toward more industrial development at a couple key nodes around town. This is just representative of what we've done in other communities in the county and what we would like to work with city staff and city council on in the months ahead here in 2023.
Our dues to the Economic Development Council have been well-received and well-used over the last 10 years or more, and we look forward to continuing our partnership with them. And I think at this point, Adam, I think you gave a figure of...
$23,864. It's based on, well, that's, that's what it's been...
Yeah.
For over a decade without increase.
Yeah. And what they've done has been helpful.
Yes.
I'll motion acceptance of the dues renewal for GLC, EDC.
Motion by Kelly, seconded by Don Hicks. Roll call, please.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Echov?
Yes.
Callis?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Gaber?
Callis.
Willie?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Thank you, Adam.
Thank you, council.
We look forward to another great year. Moving on, in our agenda, committee reports, public properties and utilities. I think, Mike, you're going to have to step up there.
You want me up there or from here?
Right there.
Okay. The Public Properties and Utilities Committee was held on April 7th at City Hall. I was acting as vice chairman and called the order, called the meeting to order at 4:00. City Administrator acted as the clerk and took role, and the following members were present, Barr, myself, Jovanini, Callis, and Bradshaw. Also attending was Mayor Alvin, City Administrator Wilford, and Fire Chief Campbell. On the agenda was the ambulance substation. The committee discussed a number of priorities in seeking a location for an ambulance located west of the railroad tracks. Some key priorities included accessibility to areas within the Protection District, west of the district, and access to OSF, as well as locations within the corporate limits. The city administrator advised outreach can be made on a number of those properties to compile data and to present at a later committee and council meeting. Then we adjourned, and I respectfully submit this.
Thank you. It was a nice meeting. We also had a finance committee meeting. Kelly, you want to run us through there?
Yeah, we had a finance committee meeting last Monday, April 7th. All the members of the committee were in attendance, along with the mayor and city administrator. We reviewed the fee schedule for most of the things within the city that we have fees associated with, and we have that in our packet, which we will discuss next on the agenda. We agreed to the few changes that Jim had in place on there. Then we got an update as well on the ambulance substation, and we had some discussion on, about the golf course and the use of the halfway house and other alcohol sales out there. We didn't make any, any final decisions, just more or less had conversation about that, and the pool will remain out of operation until a more permanent disposition is finalized at this time. That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on, we're going right to the fee schedule. You want to talk about that, Jim?
Yes, over the last couple of months, staff and I have been working at the fee schedule, taking a look at it. Looks like it was last updated and, or at least posted in 2019. And so we went through that fee schedule and some recommendations for some changes have been made from that. The first thing you would know on that fee schedule, you would see is, we added ambulance fees on there. Those are the same fees, they just were not on the previous fee schedule, so we wanted to make sure they were included. On the next page, in building and zoning, we, David had, had done some research, and we were lacking in a couple of things, demolition permits, some fence zoning certificates and utility work right of way. Those were recommended to be added to the list of fees. And then cemetery fees, it had been some time since they had been updated, and there were some changes of $250 added to grave space fees, with the exception of infant fees, those did not change. And in Parks and Recreation, there were some changes recommended for pavilion rental reservation to $10 per hour, as well as $25 per hour for the band show and for, for parties. Some of those fees had been just one flat fee, and the industry standard is, is a per-hour fee. And then on the last page, the main one on the last page, the sewer use fee per 100 cubic feet. This on our website has been posted for some time, that with the upgrades at the sewer plant, increased sewer rates were going to be needed, and we felt it was time to begin that, as, as our debt service for that will begin as well. And that was a 10% increase from, I don't have the previous figure, but it's up to $6.19, 10% minus that. There you go, thank you. It was 563 before that. And then those fees, if accepted, or however they end up, will, will be posted on the website for the public to review as well.
Any questions for Jim on that? As I said, we've covered this several times, so I think we should go ahead and...
I'll motion acceptance of all the fees and changes that we had in place.
Motion by Kelly, seconded by Brian. Roll call, please.
Echov?
Yes.
Callis?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Gaber?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Jovanini?
Yes. And those fees will be in effect May 1.
Moving on, fire department. We have need for a new tool.
On an annual basis, the city of Pontiac is eligible for a safety grant through the Illinois Public Risk Fund, and in 2023, the city of Pontiac is eligible for $29,060. Tonight, I come before you to request if I can use a portion of those funds to purchase a battery-operated extrication tool for $14,151. The purpose of this tool is to replace and phase out our older set of extrication tools, which are hydraulic, they're about 30-plus years old, and part of the purpose of the IPRF grant is to enhance safety for public employees, and what this battery-operated tool will do is allow our personnel not to have to carry as heavy of equipment for agricultural, industrial, and motor vehicle accidents. It actually reduces it significantly. Instead of carrying four pieces of equipment out into a field to extricate somebody, we just have to carry one piece of equipment to perform the same task. Another benefit of the battery-operated tool is we can enter hazardous environments, such as in a structured fire where there's smoke filled, and if there's a building that collapses, it'll allow us to free a victim utilizing this tool, or worst case, if there's a down firefighter, it'll allow us to get the trapped firefighter out because it's battery-operated and not gas-powered like our current tools. So there are many benefits to this. Like I said, the city is eligible for this safety grant every year. As instructed by Administrator Wilford, I worked with other, with the other department heads, we kind of divvied out what we wanted to utilize this funding for, and this is the portion that they agreed upon to allow me to, to request for this specific tool. So tonight, I come to you to see if I can use the safety grant for this tool at $14,151.
Thanks, Jay.
I would so move, because I've carried those tools that he's talking about, and I know how heavy they are, and anything to make the job easier is well worth it.
Motion by Don, seconded by... Motion by Don, seconded by Jason. Roll call, please.
Callis?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Gaber?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Eckhoff?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Now we have the Police Department with a purchase there. I'd like to get going. Chief?
Good evening, counsel. During our budget meetings, we spoke about the need for body-worn cameras for the Police Department. The Safety Act mandates departments our size to implement such a program by January of 2025. I'm a strong proponent of body-worn cameras. I feel that they would do a tremendous job in reducing unnecessary court overtime, frivolous complaints, that sort of thing. In this day and age, it's more resounding of if it's not on video, it didn't happen. So I really think this is one of the best tools to provide steady enforcement towards that. In doing some cost estimates, there were two finalists. Motorola was approximately half the cost of the next lowest bid. Package is expensive. I understand that the current bid is $48,435. There are grants available for this. I've applied for two. Both of them are, one is a match grant, which I've not heard anything back, and the other one, you can't officially submit it until after a purchase is made for partial reimbursement. But I feel the Motorola Body Cameras and redaction software, which will keep us in compliance with the Freedom of Information Act, are the best course of action should we decide to move forward with the body-worn camera program this year.
Can we have a question?
How long do you expect it will take to get them? Is it a...
She just responded to my email today, six to eight-week turnaround time.
Oh, that's all.
Five years-ish. They come with a three-year full warranty, and give or take five years per camera.
And the cameras themselves aren't the most expensive part of it. It's the software initially. Yeah. The 48,348,435 is still under what we had originally expected to budget for it.
I just got to say, as a defense attorney, these are right, because there is none. It will save, I agree with the chief, and they both...
And we're mandated to do it.
Yeah.
We like to follow those mandates, right?
Yes.
Well, I'd so move that we let the chief go forward.
Motion by Phil Callis, seconded by John Willie. Roll call, please.
Lee?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Gaber?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Eckhoff?
Yes.
Callis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, you got one more shot.
I do have one more. This is the tag-along request. As far, I was hoping Mr. Henderson from IT would be here to help me out on this one, but our current digital storage capabilities are about 90%. That houses our body camera footage and all photographic evidence. Obviously, with the body-worn camera footage coming into play with the retention, we are in need of additional evidence storage capabilities. IT put together a proposal for me. I told them to let me know what is needed. At the lowest cost, he says that a refurbished server with add-on storage enclosure will definitely suit our needs. The program, I guess he built in his head, is the grand total of 5854, and he said the comparable specs for brand-new equipment not refurbished would be in the neighborhood of $21,000 to $22,000.
How soon would something like this be available?
Part of that, I would really need to speak with Mr. Henderson sooner than later, but it comes in various different pieces that he has to put all together and deploy. I think it could be up and running before we have body-worn cameras here trained and up in effect.
So basically, we're going to, you're asking us to approve proceeding to a point when you come back with the final?
Requesting that you authorize Mr. Henderson to purchase these, this server and the storage capabilities. We are going to eventually be in need of them anyway, but that need is a little more prevalent with the body-worn camera footage that we're required to save.
Okay. So it'll satisfy the purchase of those cameras?
Correct.
That's what his purpose, that's what he designed it for.
Let me make a motion.
Motion by Mike Barr, seconded by Jamie. Roll call, please.
Hicks?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Gaber?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Eckhoff?
Yes.
Callis?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Thanks, chief. Next up, we have the Water Treatment Department.
Good evening. For the past 12-plus years, the treatment plant has been utilizing a open cab Bobcat brand skid steer. We use that for a multitude of tasks on a weekly basis, anything from moving around equipment to removing equipment to moving around sludge, cleaning vector pads, you name it. That unit is a 1997, I believe, and when we obtained it, the unit was about half wore out then, and our needs for this little unit have increased throughout the years. One of the main issues with this particular skid steer tractor right now we have is with the treatment plant upgrade, we've changed the way we handle our de-watered sludge. We're moving it around a little bit more now with the plant. We're utilizing our sludge drying beds, which means we have to manually remove that dried sludge and place it into roll-off containers, which is then hauled to the landfill. So we're making a little bit more of a mess as a side effect of how we're managing that sludge. And one thing we are required to do is clean up any of that sludge and debris that makes it on our roads, our walkways, whatnot, to keep it out of our storm sewer system throughout the facility. So in addition to our current unit being undersized, being very aged, and having an open cab that doesn't protect the operators from the dust and debris when we're cleaning, we're looking at the need for a sweeper attachment and utilizing that sweeper attachment. We really need to look at a skid steer that has HVAC and a complete enclosed cab, as opposed to trying to utilize a sweeper attachment, which is creating dust, and the operator of that unit having to breathe that in. We've attempted that for about 20 seconds and said, no, that does not create a safe atmosphere for that operator. So when we developed our 2023, 2024 fiscal budget, we do have a line item for new equipment, and this was one of the pieces of new equipment I wanted to try to purchase this fiscal year. I've solicited two quotes, one from Bobcat of Bloomington, one from Prairie State Tractor here in town. The Bobcat unit, and our Bobcat out of Bloomington, their Model S62 came in at $44,987.41, a little over $4,000 lower than Prairie State Tractor's bid of $48,789.52. These are very comparable units, and we did have to kind of work through generating these quotes to keep the two units as similar as possible, to keep the bidding process as fair as possible. Both units are three to four months out, I'm told, from each manufacturer. So if we were to place an order for one tomorrow, it'd be late summer more than likely before we see the unit. So I would like to accept the low bid from Bobcat of Bloomington at $44,987.41, pending any questions.
Would there be any use of the unit in other areas?
There may be. I had these bids generated as a trade-in to try to keep the cost down on the new unit. If that's something we wanted to explore was trying to use that somewhere else, but like I said, it was worn out when we got it, because we didn't have much use for it now that we've been using it.
It's really worn out.
It's going, well, it's going to take quite a bit of money over the next year to put into it, to keep it usable for years to come. And the reality is, not having that enclosed cab
Yeah.
is something that really manufacturers don't provide anymore as far as their units. Almost every unit comes with an enclosed cab for those type of reasons, so I think that's something we need to trend to, just for a safety standpoint, is those type of units having an enclosed cab. I can, we can look at any alternative, the counsel pleases.
Any other questions for Jake?
I would motion acceptance of the low bid.
Motion by Kelly, seconded by Brian. Roll call, please.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Gaber?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Eckhoff?
Yes.
Callis?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. We have an item, status of the Stillwell Building.
Yes, in your packets, David couldn't be here tonight, but in your packets, he had provided an update. As you know, that automobile accident was December 2nd. It's been extremely slow with no activity. The condition of that structure is unsafe, and it does pose a threat to the health and safety of the public. Recently, they have obtained an architectural engineer who submitted preliminary drawings, and those were delivered on March 16th. And the second preliminary set were delivered on April 11th. David was told he should have the final drawings by the week of April 16th, and he has been in contact with them and expressed how critical it was to expedite the final drawings for approval and then complete the task of obtaining a contractor to rebuild the structure. So the process is moving. It's not moving probably fast enough for most people in the city, but it is moving.
And I'm sure that we've all had plenty of phone calls on how slow it's going. And as the weather was really nice this last week, not so much this coming week, the fear of unwanted visitors has been raised, so that's why we're putting a little more pressure on to get a resolution to the problem. Moving on, City Council. As you know, we will be swearing in new council members May 1st, and we have some council people that are going to be leaving us. And I thought this would be an appropriate time to recognize them for their vast efforts and time spent coming to these meetings and working for the community. I only have 18 pages of notes here, so don't worry. I want to keep it a little shorter than that. But first of all, from the Fourth Ward, Maggie Clark will be leaving. She's left her ward, so she can't represent them in the future, and we really appreciate her efforts. She filled in for Kurt Myers, and she brought some really fresh ideas and nice ideas in total to the city, and we wanted to give her a certificate of appreciation. Second, we had this young guy that's been on the council 10 years who's leaving us. These pieces here are the agendas from when they were sworn in, so nice little souvenir. And then, for 10 years of service, we have a nice plaque, suitable for hanging, obviously, that commemorates their time on the council. This one is for 10 years of service to Mr. Don Hicks, who has been our friend and advisor on many projects, and whose experience with the Fire Department and building and construction has helped the council save money and lives in many cases, I would say. So we really want to thank him for all of his efforts and present him with this plaque for his service to the community.
Be the same plaque?
Lastly, on the agenda here, is the Third Ward Alderman, or Fifth Ward Alderman. Yeah, well, we'd like you, you're moving around so much. And I have to change pages now. Oh, gosh, I didn't really say that, did I? Brian has been one of the longest-serving councilmen. He didn't come close to Frank's number, but, you know, he's done 20 years on the council and has been mayor pro temtem for a while. He almost had the shortest meeting in the history of the council, but we had one that beat him by a few seconds, you know, so. Brian has been, obviously, a stalwart of the committee, and, you know, I can't remember the exact quote, but it came out something like, "You can't help everyone, but someone can help someone." And Brian has helped us tremendously all these 20 years. He's been just a valued asset to the community. Now, he also has moved out of his ward, but as with Maggie and with Don, his service to the community is not done, because we will call upon them in future endeavors, and we really hope that he will step forward and continue to provide great service for the entire community. And also for you, we have a nice plaque. Okay, and as I said, they're not going to be missed, because we'll keep working with them, and they may be sorry that they ever answered the phone, but we'll keep trying. As long as I'm on a roll about people, I think I shouldn't mention that Paul Ciardano, who has been on the City Zoning and Planning Board for 40 years
Oh, my.
has actually resigned his position there, and we are looking for replacement for that position, too. I didn't realize it, but he preceded Dale Campbell on the zoning board. So, and he has been chairman for the last at least 35 years that I'm aware of. So I met with him and thanked him profusely for his service, and we're looking forward to getting one of the fellows off the board on there, and they're doing a great job, and he's been just another value asset. And it just amazes me, you know, recently, oh, four or five months ago, Bill Cole left the zoning board, and Bill had been on the zoning board 36 years. So when we get him, we keep him, so that's the best thing I can say. The other thing that I should mention is, is that on the May 1st agenda for our council meeting, we will have a council meeting with all of you that we will adjourn and then swear in the new council people. So I really would like to say to each of you, you've done a fabulous job, and we really appreciate everything over these years, months, that you guys... appreciate everything over these years, months, that you guys have done for the city and for the entire area, for that matter. So again, I want to thank you for your service and I think we just really appreciate everything you've done. Thank you very much.
I just want to say, Brian, are you training somebody to be the no vote on the variances?
We've talked.
That is though, that's a man of integrity. He holds to his, holds to his nose.
You're wrong.
And I respect that. I don't mean, I'm not making fun of, at all, just.
That basically ends my comments. City Council comments, please.
I see the Shaw sign down. Glad to see that. You can see down the street.
I see the demolition at the Palomar is proceeding rapidly too.
I just want to say it's been an honor and privilege the last twenty years. Everybody around this table has offered a lot to me. Thank you all. Carver heads, employees, councilmen, since then, long. Thanks for making it.
You.
Yes, sir. I've been around a few years and started out as a fire, as a fire department as paid on call and, and lapsed into this a few years later, but I've enjoyed my tenure helping the city and doing things for the city.
Certainly enjoyed your expertise.
Sometimes.
Sometimes, yes. City Administrator.
Okay, I have one last need for Brian and Don as we have a need for an infrastructure committee to look at a facade grant. You have some time available? We could go, we could either, we could either go later this week, Thursday, Friday, or into next week. And that committee is Gaber, Jovanini, Barr, Akoff, Hicks, Willie.
Thursday, have to be back. Friday's coming up.
Yep, I, I said Friday, but I won't be here Friday, so let's not do Friday.
Thursday'd work for me.
Thursday's okay?
Thursday's clear all the way.
Okay.
Thursday works for me also.
Me too.
Thursday, four thirty. So I have.
Public comments. Yes, can you step up to the mic, please?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Alvey in the City of Pontiac. Council members, my name is Stacy Gramasio. I'm with, I'm the Director of External Affairs for Cypress Creek Renewables. And I just had a quick announcement. Our, our company has launched a scholarship program for graduating seniors and one of the counties chosen was Livingston County for the scholarship program. And this is because our company is committed to making a positive impact in the communities in which we develop and operate. And our goal is to help young people be successful and also encourage them in careers in STEM-related fields in renewable energy. The nice thing about this scholarship is it's, it's based on creativity of the, the personal statement and the video. There's no minimal GPA and it could be for a traditional college student or someone going to a trade school. And you can find information about that at CC renew dot com forward slash scholarships. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Nice. Good luck with that, by the way. Any other comments? Hi there.
Julie Russo from Cornell. I just have a question. When will the zoning and planning board hear the Pearl Street solar project? When will that be?
That will be at the next meeting. I, I'll get it here in a minute.
Okay.
I saw an email on that too.
Yes.
Would you just like to email the date to me?
I can, I can, yes.
We can do that.
Okay, that might be easier. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We do have need of executive session, so unless there's any more public comments, we will adjourn this meeting to executive session. I'll need a motion to do that.
A motion that we move to executive session?
Motion by Kelly, seconded by Frank Jovanini. We will. Oh, oh. Roll call please.
Yes.
Jovanini.
Yes.
Akoff.
Yes.
Callis.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Bradshaw.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Gaber.
Yes.
Willie.
Yes.
Give us about three to four minutes and we will go to executive session.